We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you.
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It's November 1st, probably the worst day for teaching, the day after Halloween. And all three county commissioners are here, and we'll start with consents and approval.
That's right. You were a teacher, weren't you?
No.
What were your guidance counts?
Jan.
Oh, guidance.
Neither. Guidance count.
I forgot. I didn't know that.
Yeah. Still had to deal with sugar rushes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Two exonerations, 2007, 6941, one request to create a new statement, $99.70. Minutes for October 25th, 2023. Vouchers, General County, 144,001, 3637. Cold Severance, 5,000. 911, 44,002, 7407, Chestnut Ridge Park, 4,08529. Camp Muffley, 2,016142. Mason Dixon Park, 99595. Mon County Center, 2,015152. Recreation levy, $304.99. Assessors valuation, $48.00. ARPA, 34,41828. Purchasing card adopters, General County, 75,001, 4063. 911, 19163. Camp Muffley, 92152. Mason Dixon Park, 20459. Mon County Center, 27160. Assessors valuation, 9545. ARPA, 5,03039, for a voucher total of 319,43170. Now, budget revisions, position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website, and fiduciary orders for November 1st, 2023.
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Papa moving second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. No fiduciary specific reports. Okay. Introduction of new employees and personnel changes, and we have none. Comments from the public. Is anybody liking, liking to come down and speak? Well, we're in a roll. Okay. This is a great time. Presentation, Mandy Curry and the individuals she brought with, both healthy kids, and also an announcement about this amazing ARC power award. So we look forward to... Do we have free food?
We should have brought free food. Yes. All right. It's good to see everyone again.
Good to see.
A very quick update on how things are going at the Mon County Center.
You just state your name, address, who you are, just so people who are watching it understand.
Oh, you bet. Okay. Mandy Curry, Healthy Kids, Inc. We run a central kitchen out of the Mon County Center in Morgantown, and I personally live in Harrison County. Good, Tom?
Yeah.
We won't hold that against you.
Yeah, thanks. I know. I don't know if I just, I didn't know what, where you meant physically lived.
No, that's fine.
Okay, got it. Okay, so a quick update. We are currently preparing 1,000 meals a day, 1,000 hot meals a day out of that facility. We are, in December will be our two-year anniversary, and everyone's two-year anniversary, but we started at 80 meals a day, so now we're up to over 1,000 a day.
Wow.
Over the summer, we hit that point of 1,600 hot meals a day, and it worked. So now we know the capacity of that kitchen, which has been really great. We are preparing now for the preservation kitchen that Rachel's been working on, and holy smokes, like the timing of that is so perfect, and we are excited for where that's going to go and how it's also going to serve others across the state, too. So, for example, we have 500 cases of apples that we'll be using that preservation kitchen to help to process into applesauce, and then we'll be using that, that applesauce will then go to other parts of the state that they can use in their production as well. So we're working on that, as well as, we also have local tomatoes that'll be coming in every week, and we'll be using the preservation kitchen for that, making homemade sauces and things along those lines. So where we are at, to also prepare, while Rachel is getting that, we are in the process of getting our manufacturer's license, too, in addition. So that will allow us to do additional things out of the preservation kitchen, one of which is the creation of individual meals. This will allow us to prepare meals, frozen meals, that could then be produced out of that kitchen and sent to other parts of the state. Senior meals, after-school meals, whatever it might be, will have that ability. So we've been working, this is Mary Hastings, and this is Bryce Haynes. They're on the Project Healthy Kids side, so they're the nonprofit end of this. They've been working, we have consultants who have been helping us on all the HACIT plans and how to use that preservation kitchen space in the right and the safest way to produce the best product that we can. So in conjunction with the preservation kitchen, we will then be working on our manufacturer's license, and by 1st of January, we should be able to start producing these that we can start to send out. It'll be in pilot phase out of this kitchen, but that's our, that's our plan. We don't know how many we're going to be able to produce, but this is where we're starting. I'll show you what that looks like in just a minute, but part of the ability to do that is that we have received a grant. It's an ARC Power Grant Award. We are a, Project Healthy Kids is a subawardee of that. It's actually through the Food and Farm Coalition, and that will help to get, essentially what is happening is the Mon County Center is becoming a model for other kitchens across the state, to create other hubs across the state. So I don't know, Sean, if that was quite the vision, but the vision is now that it's a model, that others are now using, they're coming to the kitchen and wanting to see. And it's actually even beyond West Virginia. We actually had folks from the Bezos Academy funded by... So the Bezos Academy is a, it's a group of Montessori schools funded by Jeff Bezos, and they are wanting to do central kitchens for all of their Montessori schools across the country. They picked about 13 central kitchens across the country to look at, and we were one of them. They sought us out. He came, he spent the whole day. He spent much longer than we thought he would. We were, by noon, I was like, okay, don't you have to go catch your plane? And he just stayed. So he stayed, and we continue to stay in touch, and they have plans to do something similar-ish, but he said, we are far ahead of where they are at and what they are thinking and what they're planning. So it really is a model now for the country, for central kitchens, which is exciting. What really makes all that work is the equipment, that you equipped it so nicely to be able to do what it does. As we are traveling the state and seeing other kitchens across the state, our, our projects can't hit that full potential because they don't have the type of equipment that you all have here at this one. And so, God bless you for that foresight, Sean, that had, that you just thought about those things, because, I mean, I don't know. It's just perfect. The things like the blast chiller, that's a gift, for sure, for communities to have that. Many don't have that. So there is some really wonderful equipment here that is very helpful for the community, and it's going to help a lot of people. So, thank you. So that is what's, so that's the process that we're in right now, that ARC Power is going to help to do this in other parts of the state. The funding that we received specifically from Mon County was more like preservation equipment. It was our use of the preservation space. We are now leasing, Project Healthy Kids is leasing an office space out of the Mon County Center. So we're excited about that, that they have their own dedicated space. So those are a few ways in which that funding is, is going to be used from that ARC Power. That's three years. Our commitment and the goal and the expectation is to produce a million meals, a million meals in three years. It won't be all out of one kitchen. It will be out of a series of kitchens. But it's, that's a lot of meals in, in three years. That's exciting stuff, though. So I thought you all might enjoy just seeing a little bit. This is draft one. Draft one, maybe not to be, I don't know if it's possible to show you and then not, and not if it's shared, because it hasn't been approved by the Department of Ag yet. But this is what we are calling these meals. We are calling them pivot meals, and it's symbolic of what we believe is the pivot in the local food system. This is the first draft of it, but this is the cardboard marketing and messaging and packaging that will go along these containers and go out. And it talks a lot about, you know, our, kind of our, what that symbolizes for us. But also at the bottom, it does say that it's manufactured at the Mon County Center in Morgantown, which we're excited about. So, yeah, it's really good stuff that's happening.
Can we share this with the media also, or is it not for public comment?
Not yet. If you don't mind.
I figured, I figured we'd be asked, so.
Well, as soon as the Department of Ag approves, and then we, then we'll go to the next steps of manufacturing license. So hopefully, we're not too far away from that, but this is the first draft of it.
Who would this meal, who would these meals, would they be going to right now? What is your pilot project?
So we are looking at a couple of options. So, for example, this could go out to, for example, Mount Near Food Bank. Mount Near Food Bank wants meals to go out. Frozen meals could go. It could go out to seniors, any type. So that will be the plan. It could also go out to children. We'll also be working to create a medically tailored line. So this will be, for example, seniors that are, you know, diabetics or needing specialized menus. We can do that type of work with these, too, and children as well. So that will probably be one of our earlier pilots, is medically tailored meals for children. Yeah. I think that's all.
Thank you so much, Mandy.
Thank you.
Again, there's a lot of credit to be shared in this whole project. We had the space. We didn't have the total vision, so it took us collaborating with a lot of people when we wrote the first grant, and writing that grant, before we wrote that grant, we really weren't sure what we wanted to do with the kitchen. And then as we brought a bunch of people together to write that grant, it really started formulating the vision of what we wanted to do. And you weren't even involved at that point, but we got, we got the base of it right. And then I think, I was getting ready to send an appointment the other, last week, and I, I was making an appointment with Frank Vitale, and I pulled up an old email from Frank, and he's the one that introduced me to you. And he sent me an email. It was 3/21/2221. He sent me an email, said, I really like you to touch base with Mandy Curry. And at that time, we were, we were, okay, so we, we had, we had the grant. We didn't get, we didn't, weren't successful in the grant. We went ahead with the build of the kitchen, but we were still trying to formulate what, what all we wanted in that kitchen. And so when, it was like something that just dropped out of the sky. Frank said, hey, you want to meet, you want to talk to Mandy Curry? And I don't even know how Frank knew about our project. So it took a while. We didn't meet until July. I had to get, get you to, you and Rachel and me all sunk.
Yeah.
But we finally met in July, and from that first meeting, everything you said was stuff that we wanted to do. And then we used your input, and Rachel's been wonderful, because she, when we hired her for that position, she also kind of got it, like what we wanted to do, and it fit like her sweet spot of things that she's passionate about.
For sure.
So we had the pieces in place when we hired Rachel, and then when we found you, you had the vision of some of these things we wanted to do, and you didn't really say a lot about it when you first started talking about these meals, but these meals are, and I see that real quick. Even if you look at your ingredients list on, on here, it's not a bunch of words you can't pronounce and don't know what the heck they are. I mean, it's zucchini, turkey breast, chicken, chicken stock, butternut squash, sweet potatoes, unsalted butter, cornstarch, Italian seasoning, garlic powder, black pepper, sea salt, nutmeg, milk. It's not all these, you know, things. It's real food, and that's what your vision is, is to take, prepare these real meals. So it all ties in with, you know, we have the, the high tunnels there, which tie in with the VATP, the Veterans Agricultural Training Program, where we teach veterans how to grow, and then the product from those high tunnels, you know, you utilize those, the product that comes from those high tunnels in your healthy kitchen. Rachel can, I don't know, I'm sure Rachel doesn't use, everything's organically grown, you know, and everything's completely healthy, and it's, the idea was is, it's the old, teach a, give a man a fish, feed him for a day, teach a man to fish, feed him for a lifetime, and that's what we wanted to do. We wanted to teach people more how to, to do for themselves. So we have that a little bit with the training program. We're still moving forward with the preservation kitchen, which we're, we're finishing up in November. Because I was looking at my notes, and last year, we were supposed to finish up by the end of the year, but we've had some with COVID. We've had some, some delays with equipment and stuff like that. But again, we used your and Rachel's vision for, as we build that preservation kitchen on, what we needed to have. So you and your organization deserve a lot of credit. I know, I'm sorry, I forgot your first name. Your brother.
Oh, yeah, Mary. Yes.
Mary, your brother's also a chef, I think works for Mandy, and I see him regularly out there. I mean, it's just wonderful, the people you've pulled together to do this. You deserve all the credit, you and Rachel, for making this happen. Rachel is perfect in putting all the pieces together, working with you, working with other organizations.
We couldn't ask for a better partner. And in fact, others across the state are asking, like, to create a job description of Rachel.
She isn't going anywhere.
Yes, I was going to say, no, 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 no.
But they're inspired by, like, just all of that that she does. So now, how do we create, yeah. They need more Rachels across the state, which is really exciting.
She worked for us. She went to Marion County. We stole her back.
We got her back.
She's not going anywhere.
Yeah. It's really great, though. She's an inspiration, and she gets stuff done, and that's what makes all this work.
But it fits. Like, she's passionate about all the things that we're doing there, so it's, it's a perfect... I'm sure Rachel never goes to work, because she enjoys what she's doing.
For sure.
So, and I'm sure you don't either, but it's amazing how your, your program has grown.
The very last piece of your vision that was in your plan was the recovery component, and we are still doing that in the kitchen, and Bryce actually now oversees that for Project Healthy Kids, to bring more folks in recovery into the kitchen. That's been a blessing.
I've met a couple that I used to know in a former life that were, you know, on the wrong side of the law, and now they're, you know, you've given them something that they can be proud of in a career and help them along, so.
It's really great.
That's all part of that whole program they wanted to pull together, so I really appreciate.
Thank you. But we want to be good stewards of what you all have created, so thank you very much. This is a gift for us. All right. Thank you for the opportunity to update. Anything else?
Jack, you have a second?
No, I'll just comment at the end, but thank you very much for coming in. Good to see you.
Well, Mary, if, if I can say a couple things, Mandy. Especially Rachel and, you know, Mary, who... I think why we are so excited about you all is because you're like the county commission. We don't just take no for an answer. When the state said that we weren't going to get the grant, we kept going through. And then, you know, you're writing the grants, and Rachel, I, I... Every time I go out there and I see those high tunnels doing so well, I put my head between my legs, because I know I was one saying, we got to get rid of them. We got to get rid of them. And you kept saying, no, here's what we're going to be able to do with it. And, I mean, it is amazing, but I'm going to throw out something, since you're talking about pilot project, and since the pantry plus more works through Mount Near Food Bank, I'm going to throw out that we would love to be the pilot project for you when you have those meals to do that. And I think since it's local, we could work something out, and, I mean, whether it's a grant or, or whatever, but it only makes, it's the next step, because we have the programs with the Mount Near Food Bank once a month, and we have our own programs, too, but I really think it's the next step in what we can do, and to have these kind of meals, and this is what I love about it. One of the things we learned was many of the kids don't have ovens, but they have microwaves. And a child is able to hit a button for a microwave and not burn up the house. And that is what we, we could see. So we're, I'm throwing that out as your next step. Tell Mount Near Food Bank, we also will, we would love to be a part of the, the next step in the progress of the... Oh, good, I hit something.
I'll say one more thing about that as you speak about. So on that meal is a QR code. So as a part of what we'll be building out on that QR code is that we're going to be doing a video and a link to the farmers that we're using to create that meal. So now we start to pull in the Mon County farmers and all of that, and now the kids can now see where their food is coming from. And we created this new, now this is this new appreciation, we believe, of food. So that's coming, too.
We have the high tunnels, you all, and also Mount Top Bottling that wants to work with you using all the milk. So we are a whole new, the future of food industry. And I want to thank you all, Bryce, too, because, I know, Rachel, do you want to say anything? Because, I mean, you, you also had the vision, too. You know, you kept pushing us.
Oh, yeah. I just, I'm, I'm grateful for the opportunity to be in this position, to become, you know, the facilitator for a lot of this. You know, I don't do a ton of the heavy lifting by any means. That's Mandy and her people and her workers. They're very dedicated. You know, I see them in the kitchen every day, working hard and sticking to their morals. You know, they, they've never wavered from, from their, their mission of providing nutrient-dense, healthy meals for local, for our community and surrounding areas. And I'm just happy to be a part of that. It's been really cool to be there from the beginning, and I, I hope that we continue this partnership and they continue to find, you know, their, their home at the Mon County Center, and continuing to work towards this facility becoming a food hub, I think, is super cool. Really glad to be a part of it. And, and thank you, Commissioners and Renetta, for, for being supportive and carrying on with this project and, and helping see, see it through to its success. Yeah.
Thank you. Mandy, I'm already thinking out of the box, maybe before the legislative session, we would have like, maybe you'd have like a small luncheon for elected officials from all the different cities and the state, so you can show, this is what we're doing. And then I also could throw up the grant funding, a little bit, and I think that's something before they go to the session, that might be something we want to consider.
That's really great. Love that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Do we have any grants? No, we don't. Okay. Correspondence, receipt of compilation report for the year ended June 30th, 2023.
This is the financial statement.
Oh, this is the financial statement.
For an audit shortly.
Okay. We have that. We don't have to approve it, do we?
No.
Okay. Resignation letter received from Daniel Berry regarding his appointment to the Mon County Board of Health, and this is the same reason also, if you want to explain.
Yeah, so if you remember.
We did not know this.
A couple of weeks ago, Mr. Lidle from the Board of Education had agreed to be appointed to the Chief View PSD, and he had gotten an ethics ruling regarding paid physicians or physicians that get compensation. And so this is the same, the same deal. I did not realize, and I don't know that anybody realized, that the Health Department is also, can be compensated. I don't think they actually are, but in statute, it's written that they can receive compensation for attending meetings. So, so not to have a conflict with the Board of Education seat, he is tendering his resignation.
Okay. Do we have to accept that, or?
Yeah.
Move to accept the resignation regrettably, as presented.
Second.
Papa moving second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any other correspondence?
We'll, we'll be, it's already been posted to our website for people to apply. It has to be, you have to either reside in the Western or the Central District.
Okay. Any other?
I have no other.
Did either of you?
No, sir.
Okay, see, none. No unfinished business, new business. Consideration approved, the present to sign, updated incumbency, incomes.
Incumbency.
Incumbency. See, I had too much candy last night. Incumbency certificates for West Bank and United Bank acting as trustees for the tax increment finance districts.
This is mainly for Munichap, those that, that are employed by Munichap, who, who is authorized to receive certain documents regarding their work for the University Town Center TIP district. And this is just, they've had some turnover and some new people hired, so this is just to refresh those.
Move to approve the commission president signing the incumbency documents as presented.
Second.
Papa moving second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
To consider funding request by the Pleasant Valley Public Service District for the replacement of an out-of-service fire hydrant located at 3420 Luzell Union Road.
Move to approve the request in the amount of 7,500 for the replacement of a hydrant at 3420 Luzell Union Road as presented.
Second.
Papa moving second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
To consider for approval requisition number two for the University Town Center Series 2021C Excise Tax Bonds Project Fund.
Move to table this requisition at this time?
Second.
Papa moving second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consideration approved requisition number 80 for the University Town Center Excise Tax District Administrative Expense Fund.
The requisition is for 3,057835, and those funds will be paid to Munichap and Steptoe and Johnson for their administrative services to the district.
Move to approve requisition number 80 for the UTC Excise Tax District Administrative Expense Fund.
Second.
Papa moving second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider for approval appointment to the Chief View Public Service District, again.
Okay, so I've spoken to Nick Webb. He was suggested to us by legal counsel for Chief View PSD. He is a customer in the district and is willing to serve. Again, this is just to get them through the acquisition process.
Move to approve the appointment as presented.
Second.
Papa moving second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any other new business?
No.
Sean, Jeff?
No.
Okay. See, none will go from reports from elected officials and department supervisors? Nothing? Come on down. How you doing?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I just wanted to make.
Wait, you need to state your name and who you are, so everyone knows.
So my name is Alex. I'm a letter control officer for the county. I just want to make you all aware that a week ago, Republic Services upped the rate for the tonnage at the transfer station. It went up about 26 and a half percent to 6,702 per ton, which has raised our invoices over the last two weeks pretty significantly, about $200, $300. So I just want to make you all aware that despite the letter, they decided to raise the rates. I did speak with them. They don't plan any more rate increases this year, but TBD.
Well, thanks for letting us know, Alex. If you wouldn't mind, would you send Renetta and I an email with the impact for this current fiscal year to your budget?
Yes, we'll just see how that...
I appreciate it.
Do we have it covered?
We should have it covered, since we've only gotten two bills, and it just kind of varies, you know, how much, Jack runs the bins down there.
Yeah.
It's going to vary week to week on how much the bill is. I didn't get an email or a phone call to let me know that it was going up. I saw the bill and realized that it was significantly more, and kind of sat down, looked at previous bills and saw the increase, so.
I can imagine after today with the meeting, more people are going to realize that now.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, the garbage rates are also going up. That was just for us, like in recycling. The garbage rates are going up, or did go up significantly. The charge, I think, used to be a $7 minimum. Now it's a $12 minimum. That's loads up to 215 pounds. Anything more than that is going up to 8125 per ton. And then bag trash, 32 to 50 gallons, is going up to 250 per bag.
Okay.
Thanks for letting us know.
Appreciate it. Yep.
Thank you, unfortunately. Anyone else? See none? Reports from County Commissioner, Sean?
Since last Wednesday's meeting, last Wednesday night, I attended a strategy meeting with members of the MMPO to just talk about overall DOH strategy, and we'll be following up in our next MMPO meeting. Thursday, I had a Mylan Park Foundation Executive Board meeting, and then in the afternoon, I had a call with the administrator and our HR team as we work on the last couple iterations of our, of our handbook. We're almost there. Friday was staff reports, and I had a broadband tag up, and then I was, I went to the Mohawk Bowl. It was a very well-played game. Those, you know, I actually sit in the crowd, and I'm, I'm happy with whoever wins. Obviously, my kids went to MHS. It was an away game. We were at UHS, and we were sitting on the UHS side because it was so crowded. One of my best friends' son is the quarterback for UHS, which played his heart out. And it was a really well-played game. I mean, obviously, UHS had a lot of bad breaks, and MHS played well enough to win, so I'm just happy that, it was, it was just a great game to go watch. This week, on Tuesday morning, I met with Sarah Palfrey, Morgantown Libraries Association. I don't know what her position is. Director.
She's executive director.
Executive director. Just talking about a couple, a couple different items that she wanted to bring to my attention. I'm also, I asked Sarah to participate on our evaluation team for the broadband proposals that will be coming in, because I think that adds a little breadth to our team in regards to somebody that's out there, that's, that understands the connectivity issues that, on the, on the raw outskirts of the, of the county, and also understands digital equity and all those other things that we want to make sure are included in those proposals. So I appreciate Sarah, her willingness to participate in that, in that endeavor. She's probably going to regret it, because it's a lot of work, but I think a lot of good's going to come out of it. In the afternoon, or then we had another call with the HR team, too. I think we have almost the, the pre-post-final part of our handbook done, so we'll be, we'll be getting a version of that. We'll do one more review, and then I think we'll start, we'll start the review process that we, we, the commission discussed. Today's a regular day. Our Green County...
Our Green County call was canceled this morning. They, I guess Green County Commissioners had something else going on, so we'll, we'll catch up with them next month. And I do want to note that our 1:00 work session, where we're going to visit the 911 Center, has been pushed back. I believe that's going to be scheduled for the 15th. Tomorrow, we have a jail bill meeting. Friday, staff reports. The administrator and I will be participating in extension office position interviews, and then MHS has its final home game, which will be Gwenny's final home game, and final game performing in the band, unless we get a home playoff game. So it's against Linsley. If, they need to win that game to actually get a chance at a home game, so look forward to that. And that's all I have. Mandy, thank you. Thank you, you and your team, for all that you do. And Rachel, thank you for making us look so smart as you, as you carry out, execute our, our vision on what we wanted for that facility. So really appreciate your team effort. Thanks, that's all.
Just to reiterate, thanks, Mandy, and your team for coming in. It's, it's been fun to watch that grow. When I first came on commission, I heard these guys talking about an entrepreneurial kitchen, I had no idea what the heck they were talking about. It's, it's sort of tip of the cap to you two and former Commissioner Hawkins for having the vision for that facility and getting it going. I've enjoyed watching it finish up and get built and seeing what's coming. We had the honor of being the first recipients of these frozen meals that Healthy Kids did for, for a family member that was in need at the time, and they are fantastic. The flash chiller makes all the difference, because you lock in all the moisture and the flavor, so you're not getting just dried-out microwave stuff, but they were really, really good. At least that was told to me, I didn't actually even, didn't want to take his thunder there. But, so thank you for, for everything, and Rachel, for all your vision. You're probably getting tired of being told that so far, but we'll say it again. So it's really, it's nice to see when, I mean, you tell me that someone that, of that level comes in to look at our kitchen and tells us that it's, you know, your program and our program is far ahead of anyone else's, it really is a testament to all the work that's gone into it, and I'm proud to be part of it, so, thank you.
Thanks for making that point, Commissioner Renata, because I would be remiss if I didn't mention that this, the whole building was really championed by Commissioner Hawkins. As Ed used to tell me all the time, you fill in the box. Like, he would have, you know, we all have different dreams, and we all defer to each other to try to carry out those dreams, and then we all do different things to make it work, like the financial end of it, and, but the whole, the whole, the building and the entrepreneurial kitchen was really Commissioner Hawkins' dream. Even when we wrote the grant, he's just like, Ed, you got to tell me what we want this to do. Because if we don't get grant money, this isn't going to happen. And he knew what he wanted to do, but it took a pooling, a lot more people together, you know, to, to really put those ideas into words. And then we did that, we did that grant opportunity, and Ed was like, yeah, that's kind of what we wanted, what I wanted to do. And then, so as it, the grant opportunity is what made me a disciple of what, what we could do there, especially as we were working through COVID, because that was real prevalent. We were working through COVID as we were doing that, and we realized the importance of food insecurity, especially in a world where we were so disconnected. So I was happy to take on that, that dream, and once we found Rachel, I was able to offload that dream on to Rachel, and here, here's where we are now. But I certainly wanted to mention Commissioner Hawkins, as this was really his, his baby, and, you know, we all, we all work together on things, but I like to give credit where credit's due. So thank you, Jeff, for even mentioning that. That's all.
Yeah, first, I know Mandy and Mary are too modest, but you also got another grant a while ago that got you a van. Could you just explain, because, I would like you to go, because you haven't told anyone that, and this is a key to what you were able to do, and this was a major grant.
We received a grant, it was a hybrid grant. Part of it went to the social enterprise, which was Healthy Kids, Inc., and part of it went to the nonprofit, which is called Project Healthy Kids, and that was from the American Heart Association. And so the hybrid was, a portion of it went to grant funding to cover a number of things to test these types of initiatives that we're doing. So it was to test the, you know, work on marketing, to test the types of containers, those types of things for that. And then the other was to cover two vehicles, one was a refrigerated vehicle, and one was a transport vehicle of meals too. That was really big for us.
Yes.
Yeah, and really started to kind of change how we can now distribute. Yes.
Thank you. I know you didn't want to say it, but that was very huge, and that, that set everything in motion after that. Just two other things, I did meet with the sheriff, and part of when that ordinance that we had passed, I had asked for literature. So we are also handing out from the sheriff, when they go to a spot where there are individuals in the median, to try and help them. And I think that's part of what's so important that this county commission did. It isn't just pass ordinance, but also be able to help the individuals, and we have information that we're handing out there. And the other thing is, November 11th is the unbelievable US Capitol Tree celebration in Montague County, and what has turned into a small event has turned into something else. But you'll hear more about it from 2:30 to 4:30. We have a gigantic map of what's going to be downtown. I just want to throw things out, like informational booths, there's Touch a Truck, Toys for Tots, and historical vehicles, World War II historical, photos with Santa, we're changing the whole courtyard and so that, you know, so it's really going to be an exciting family time. And I'll say this, I'm hoping that, one of the things the city and the county are talking about is, if this goes so well, we'd have like an event every year for downtown, so on. So I'm very excited about this.